Thank you for joining us. This is Live with Miami's Community News. I'm Michael Mueller. Our very special guest today is Miami Dade County Commissioner Raquel Vergelato. Thank you for being here, Commissioner.
My pleasure.
So this is the budget season.
Yes.
And out of all the budgets in the last couple of years, this is the one that's been most talked about.
As it should be.
Yes. So let it go. Let's, let's tell the story.
Well, first of all, this is a manufactured crisis. This is not a real crisis. You'll remember when I ran in 2020, I started talking about the constitutional officers and how the constitutional officers were going to radically change the way that our government worked, and that the county needed to save money. When I got to the dais, one of the first items that I tried to bring was on determining the fiscal impact of the constitutional officers. At that moment, Commissioner Joe Martinez had the hold on the item, and he spent a year and a half prohibiting me from bringing up the topic whenever we had a meeting, and I couldn't bring an item. Finally, then-President Chairman of the County Commission, Pepe Diaz, allowed me to suspend our rules and bring an item so that we could finally codify what had been approved by voters at the state level 10 years before, which the county had not done, and start looking at the fiscal impact of the constitutional officers. I did that in '22, and as part of that budget, I created a fund where I asked the county commission to save for the transition. At the time, I said that the transition would cost us between $160 million to $240, they gave me $10 million that year and an extra $4 million the next year. So this is happening because we didn't save for it, and they tried to blame the constitutional officers. I've worked with all of the constitutional officers. They're doing their best.
Tell folks what those departments are.
So it's really important that people understand that the first is the sheriff, and we're going to talk about that on the 20th, and we'll talk about it today also. But one of the things that the county did is, last year, we actually reduced the police budget so that when the sheriff took office, we could offer her less than what we had funded before. So, and I called it out, so a lot of the heat that they're giving Rosie is not right. Then we have the tax collector. Obviously, the tax collector has been the focus of a lot of the memos that my colleagues have sent, because he decided to be a fee officer instead of a constitutional officer. So he collects a 2% fee, and that's money that could come back to the county, but that's a lot more complicated than what people understand, so we'll explain that also. Then you have the property appraiser, which was elected but not independent. That's my dad. They have separated also from, from the county. And then you have elections, which that budget is very interesting, because the way that it's presented by the administration is comparing it to its last year. But that budget, actually, you have to look at it in a five-year cycle, because how much money they need in a gubernatorial is not the amount of money that they need in a presidential, right? They fluctuate depending on the amount of elections, and the big cost savings there is having all of these small cities move away from these April, May, and June elections, and move into the August-November cycle, because if the cities move into the August-November cycle, they pay zero. The county then does that election, and we all save a lot of money. So those are the constitutional, and then the clerk, obviously, is now completely independent, and then there also our finance department, which is another thing that we're going to be talking about, because we've kept some of those services, and we're duplicating some of those, and we should be giving them to the clerk. So there's no crisis. We knew that this was coming. Also, in 2020, we started using ARPA money to create things, and I criticized it when it was happening. I voted against, for example, I was the only vote against the Innovation Authority. Nothing against innovation. I'm the first one that wants to innovate, right? But we were creating a department with money that was not recurring. And one of the things that I've been trying to get the board to do is to look at how we fund these departments, and to find ways where, whether we profit share or we monetize things properly, it's not just on the backs of the ratepayers or every year in the budget.
Explain to the people that are watching the position, what the mayor does as far as presenting, and what the commission does concerning the budget.
So, so what the mayor does is she presents her budget, and then we get to go through it line by line. Historically, that has been very different. When there's a good budget, you know, the commission goes along, right? So for years, we've kind of been going along. I've made a lot of changes over the last few years. For example, I took money out of some things and funded Save Our Seniors. Like, I moved money around. I tried to lower the mileage every year, and every year I never got like a second. This year I got a second, but obviously, it's a difficult year. So one of the things that we're doing is finding savings in other ways and seeing how we can help the organizations that have been cut out of this budget. But it really is up to the commission. Historically, the commission has created different vehicles to deal with the budget. I've asked for special meetings. I got one. I am the chair of appropriations. So first, I want to thank the chairman for allowing me to chair appropriations. I chaired infrastructure and innovation for five years. I love it. I love being over waste management and water and sewer. But appropriations allows me now the opportunity to really drill down on everything that has a fiscal impact. Because the problem is, and I, my colleagues have the best of intentions, but sometimes they're schizophrenic, right? Because they, they sit there, or they're on social media, or they come on with you, and they talk about how they're fiscal conservatives. But then when the item comes, they're like, oh, Regalato, why do you gotta be that person? You know, why do you gotta, why do you gotta attack this particular item? But they don't understand that it needs to come from somewhere, right? We don't print money. We're not the federal government.
Here are the things that people, they call me, here's what they're concerned with. They heard the Parks Department was about a $25 million decrease, and I'm not quite sure what that entails, but people tell me, well, it means they're not going to mow the yards, the grass as much. Certainly, that's part of it. About a potential parking fee or entrance fee over Tropico.
I got a solution for that.
All right, good. And, and the, a lot of charities got cut out. That seems to be the number one.
And cultural affairs.
A culture, 12 million.
It's an existential, yeah.
And so people are calling us. They say, you have to call your commissioner.
Yes.
Gotta call the mayor, but the commissioners vote on it.
So the good news is, on the 20th, which is when we're having our meeting of the whole, I'm going to be making a presentation on behalf of appropriations and solving some of those line items. So for example, you know, cultural affairs, I've spoken to the mayor. I know she's going to have a meeting on the 19th. I'm going to attend. We should not merge cultural affairs and libraries. That's a horrible idea. Legally, it's complicated, because the funding of libraries is separate, you know, and from cultural affairs. And you'll remember, last year, we cut the cultural affairs grant, and we said that we were going to find it through private money. That didn't really happen. There is no savings. All she's doing is she's gutting the grant program, and she's getting rid of the director. So we found her different ways that she could do that. There's things inside cultural affairs that can allow this department to exist. You know, we got grant funding from the state, and we can find other funding. There's private institutions that also want to help, but this is not an opportunity to get rid of that department. It's very valuable to us, even if we don't have all the funding that we need right now for it. Now, the CBOs, I'm going to go one by one.
She's working me out here, folks.
The CBOs. So the CBOs are really important. A lot of CBOs got a lot of money from the county.
CBOs are.
Yes, community development, you know, organizations, and these are our nonprofits. When, in 2020, we had, we were flush with money, and we grew our CBO budget, and we grew it, and we grew it, and we grew it. But inside this universe, there are some CBOs that give us an amazing return on investment, and the grant programs, you know, do that. The problem that we have is commissioners, at the end of every meeting, throw money here, throw money there. You know, they have certain nonprofits that they're more fond of. They tie them to different, you know, projects, instead of looking at the return on investment. There are CBOs that, because of the work that they do, it's an obligation that the county has that they are doing much cheaper. So I'm bringing a list of those CBOs and showing how we should emphasize those. And again, we're being put in a difficult position, because we're being told, you know, choose between CBOs, right? How can I tell you that children are more important than the elderly, or that sex trafficking is more important than autism? Those things, that, that's a horrible place to be put in. So I think we should focus on return on investment, you know, what they're doing, how they're doing, and having a model that's very similar to the Children's Trust, and providing them with five-year funding so that then they can plan ahead. They shouldn't be hand-to-mouth every year. You know, we should give them the opportunity to do that, and I'm going to provide some ways in which we can do that. And other departments that are taking from the general fund that should be supporting CBOs, because there are departments, and we'll go through what is enterprise and what is general fund. There, there's lots of money in this budget, you know, it's just being allocated.
What is the budget?
Oh, yeah.
What is the budget?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm not even gonna, I'm not even gonna.
I've heard it's 12.7 billion with the B.
I brought you, I brought you the, the budget. It's, the budget in brief gives you like the, the ridiculous number, you know, because you have to add capital. You know, I brought the actual budget so that you can all see the enormous numbers, right?
Big numbers.
Big numbers. They're big, big numbers. But we'll go through like what is enterprise and what we've already done. But the parks, I will tell you, there is money in parks. I was able to move a few things around. We need dramatic changes to the way that we run our Parks Department, but I think the charging parking is a horrible idea. The county is not good at doing that. We don't even do it well in our metro rail stations, in our transit stations. We're just not good at that. That's not real money. And it's going to deter people from using parks. So there's, there's, I have a.
We got a lot of calls from people that, that go to Tropico, said, listen, I take my kids, and this is a long line that goes through there, and apparently, if you don't pay for the, for the entrance or parking within a short period of time, you get a immediate ticket. You mentioned about the libraries. People want to know what goes on in a library in 2025.
Yeah, so libraries have changed. They're more community centers and everything. I can tell you, in District 7, I focused on building bigger and better libraries. Yeah, first of all, every district pays into a library fund, and that's done by impact fees. And one of the things that was happening in 7 is we weren't utilizing that money properly, because we have these tiny, wonderful historic libraries. So Coconut Grove, for example, I have two libraries. I have the historic library that's always closed, because we're always repairing it. It's beautiful, but it's more a museum than it is a library. And then we have a library that we rent the space from the city of Miami. You'll recall, there was the issue with the library in Alapara that used to be rented from the city of Miami. So one of the things, and they decided to pull the rug out from under us. So one of the things that I did was go through all the existing libraries and say, you know what? Miami Dade County should prioritize owning its own library. We shouldn't be at the mercy of a municipality deciding one day that they don't want our library there, especially since people pay into this fund. So in Key Biscayne, when I inherited it, there was a litigation that had been going on for eight years. We solved that litigation. We're building a beautiful two-story library that's a wonderful community center, where we're going to have 3D printing, we're going to have coding, we're going to have yoga, and all the things that you get at the Westchester Library, and at the Flagler Library, and at the Kendall Library, because they're bigger, we're going to have in Key Biscayne. In South Miami, we entered into an RFP process with the city of South Miami. We're going to be demolishing that little library and building a large library. We can also have community programming. In South Miami, the big ask was for tutoring. It's going to be built on the campus. It's going to face the underlying, and we're very excited about that. And it's going to have tutoring, and it's going to have a lot of services for younger families that have now moved into South Miami. But I am keeping macrame, because I kind of love macrame, so that's another thing. And then Coconut Grove, not done. Coconut Grove, I'm building a new library there. I know, I know. Never give a Regalato.
I think that's a fish step in recovery. Keep it up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Never give a Regalato a microphone. It's like if you give a mouse a cookie, right? So same idea. So Coconut Grove, I'm actually redoing Stir Up Mundi, which is a housing project that we have there. And the community benefit is a brand-new library for Coconut Grove that's going to have an amazing community space. And I'm actually taking that plan to HUD at the federal level, because I believe that we should have educational and community spaces inside affordable and mixed-use housing, and that's going to be the first of its kind here, so we're really excited about that.
You mentioned about return on investment.
Yes.
So a couple of years ago, it appears as though the County Commission made a financial commitment to the soccer thing that's going around, right? So now, at this time of this financial issues, a couple of commissions have spoken up, forget the, forget the soccer, all right? And take the money and put it back into charities. What say you?
You know, I think as an attorney, we should keep our obligations. You know, we applied for it. We said we would pay it, and it's coming. So I don't think we should get into a lawsuit with FIFA. I think that we should meet our obligations. There's other money, you know, and I could tell you line by line. You know, when we talk about the money for the CBOs, one of the things that we're going to be talking about the 20th, and I presented these figures in my appropriations committee so that the board could really understand, and we'll talk about general fund and enterprise. But, you know, corrections and rehabilitation, 99% of the money that goes into that department comes from the general fund. And right now, we're looking at an increase that's dramatic. They have the largest increase. We just got rid of the consent decree. I brought an item to give the jails to the sheriff, and one of the things that I'm going to be doing on the 20th is drilling down on what we're providing for the jails, how much we're.
Currently, they're not together, but you want to put them together.
I want to put them together, you know, and it got through committee. They've never put it on the agenda, because the administration didn't want to do it. We finally got through the consent decree, but that's one of the, that's one of the big draws on the general fund. There's also non-departmental, you know.
Can we talk a little bit about the Sheriff's Department?
Sure.
So prior to this, the mayor was actually the sheriff of town.
Yes.
Right? There was an election last November, and Sheriff Rosie won.
Yes.
Good for her. Tell us the size of that department and the approximate budget of this.
Well, I mean, the, the police.
But it's not a department anymore.
It's not. It's not. It's not a department. When you look at the amount that we spend for the office of the sheriff, it actually is at the, at the tippity-tippity top. So the proposed is $831,891. Last year, adopted was $777,469. But like I said, that is not a real number, because we artificially reduced it, and we took out communications and 911 and a lot of things that she needs, right? So the, the difference is 54, which is why that's kind of what she's asking for. So.
You took out 54 million out of that and had it paid by a different department, so she walked.
Yeah. When I say we, I mean the administration. I'm just saying, that was the kind of the shell game that was, that was played there. But again, there are solutions to that. You know, I think Rosie is really trying to keep the workforce the same, and I agree with her, right? I think for those of us that represent ums, you know, I think we need to be really honest about how we need to keep the police presence where it is. We have a lot of retirees. I'm working with her to save some money. So one of the, one of the big costs to the county that I have found, working with the enterprise departments, is every time I fix a road, because I'm fixing roads all over, I fixed Old Cutler, whenever I do a water project, I just did one on Bay Shore, we have to pay for an off-duty police officer to be there. And one of the things that I'm working with Rosie on is, could we put a PSA there? At the end of the day, they're just standing by a cone. I don't need to put a police officer there. I want a police officer policing. I don't want them standing there by a cone while someone's doing work. So there is millions of dollars in cost savings in shifting that. But we have to help her to recruit PSOs and, and really bring up that piece of the department and cut her overtime.
And how many personnel, police officers, office folks are in the, with, in the sheriff's office, more or less?
Well, in the sheriff's office, we could, you know, she's trying to get more clerical, and that's actually a cost savings to her. So right now.
Versus having a police officer do it?
Exactly. Right. Because you're, if you're, if you have someone doing secretarial work, like, why does that person need to be a police officer? Or they're doing procurement, you know?
I'm not sure when PSAs came in, but you know, when they, it was a small accident, PSA shows up, it's probably half or 60% of what it'd be with a police officer. But bigger picture stuff, they, they are needed for other things.
Exactly. And, and look, that's what this budget is about. That's when we tell people, look, we can, first of all, we have to fund cultural affairs. We have to find some money there. We have to fund the CBOs. These are priorities, right, that we need to fund. We just need to be careful about ensuring that we're getting the return on investment. The county spends a lot of money on what they consider economic development, and, and there's a lot of outreach and a lot of things that are wonderful when you have money, but not when you don't have money, okay? You're not going to tell me that you're going to pay for outreach, but you're not going to pay for senior meals, right? Like, that, that doesn't jive. You have to be honest about those things. But what this budget does is establish what our priorities are, and there's an opportunity to really right-size things. So I did ask the mayor to get rid of the Innovation Authority, and she did. You know, the heat office, I mean, really, like, these were all Power Rangers. Like, we had a water officer, we had a heat officer. These were lovely ideas. If you had a lot of money, you know, and, and plenty of time, but they're not really priorities. What we do, as unsexy as it is, you know, is we fix streets, you know, we fix infrastructure, we pick up your trash, right? So nothing against the Office of New Citizens, which I asked her to eliminate, and she did, but that's what the federal government does. I'm not here to do that. But some of that stuff is still in this budget, and there's vestiges of these things. And a lot of county commissioners, like, create things, and then five years goes by, six years go by, seven years go by, and the thing is still there, living somewhere inside the bowels of the county. And this is an opportunity to right-size that and to focus on things like public safety.
Let's talk a little bit about those charities that rely on private donations and on public donations. Some of them provide a tremendous service to the people that need it the most.
I agree.
So what is going to happen to those recipients who need it the most if they don't, if they're not a viable not-for-profit entity anymore?
Well, that's the issue. They become the county's responsibility anyway, whether it's through the Homeless Trust or through Jackson, right? That, that's what's myopic about this choice, right? So not all of them. I'm not going to say everyone, because some of these organizations, again, there was a lot of people that latched on, you know, after 2020, but the ones that do that work, they, they do it better than us in many cases. Some of the stuff that we cut, like, there was two meals, two meals program. Look, it was 52 people. It was budgeted for 250. It was cheaper to send them their meals to their houses instead of having them come. You know, there was two adult daycares that were closed. They were under, you know, they, they were under-enrolled, and the county was losing money. But I think we should have put those out to bid for some of these nonprofits that actually run adult daycares and could do a good job. So I'm working on that. But we're going to go line by line. However, I'm not going to let you distract me with what's happening on the 20th. I do have to explain. I know, I know. I'm not going to take the bait. Okay, so this is what we've done. So two things that's important for people to understand. There's enterprise and there's general fund. Everything that the commission is talking about is general fund, and that's what we're going to deal with on the 20th, and we'll have a second, you know, show, and we'll talk about that. But enterprise is important, because we have been working on enterprise, and enterprise actually impacts your day-to-day life. So we'll start with the first enterprise department that I started working on, which is RER, which is permitting. So our permitting department was taking $7 million from the general fund. And the reason they were doing that, when we started kind of, you know, looking into what had happened over the years, is that that department had not raised its permitting fees for over 10 years. So we reached out to the developers. You know, Lourdes, who's wonderful, Lourdes Gomez, our director, did an amazing job of really going out there and talking to folks, and we raised our permitting fees. But we did not raise them for residents. I created a pilot program for residents, and we actually have a free concierge service for residents. And we also eliminated a lot of the smaller permits that residents have in unincorporated Miami Dade. So that was money saved from the general fund, something that needed to be restructured. The second one that took a lot of money from the general fund, and that continues to take a lot of money from the general fund, is waste management. So waste management, the mayor proposed a 3% increase in the fee that folks pay for their trash.
Solid waste.
Yeah, solid waste. She proposed a 3%. You'll remember that I worked on two things. Four years ago, they wanted to eliminate recycling. We had a whole battle about that. We kept recycling. I brought two changes to the recycling program and a five-year program that actually makes recycling viable for Miami Dade County, so that's not on the table. And then after the incinerator, we were, after the incinerator shut down, we were paying a ridiculous amount of money. I put trash on trains. By hook or by crook, it was very complicated, and we have a 10-year agreement to do that for a fixed rate, okay? So one of the things that I worked on, and we talked a lot about at our July 16th meeting, was really changing how our solid waste system works. It needs to be a portfolio. The problem that the county has had is it has one modality, and if that modality doesn't work, all hell breaks loose, which is what happened with the incinerator, right?
Incinerator burned down in 2023.
And then we had all this trash, and we had nowhere to put it. So we also have, and we have a solid waste master plan, which the administration has never brought before the county commission, and I have been fighting about that for some time. But they did give me a solid waste meeting, and we were able to make some changes, and I have brought, I think we're now at like 17 solid waste items that kind of create a master plan. So one of the things that we're doing that's very important is, for those of you who live down south, you know, we are dumped down south, stinks, and people complain about it. The reason that it stinks is because we burn methane. We burn money, right? We don't collect methane, we burn it. And, and if we were extracting the methane, it wouldn't smell like that. So it took a while. Finally, we're moving forward on that. You know, force the administration to do something about it. That is money that's going to go back to the system so that we don't have to raise fees, okay? We're bringing another modality to the North Waste Landfill and the South Dade Landfill, where we're going to be going through the trash and taking out recyclables that are valuable, right? Because we talk about recycling and how there's no money in plastic, but there is money in aluminum, and there's money in cardboard, and there's money in metals. So we're going to be working with a company that's going to be sifting through this trash before it goes into a landfill at their cost, no cost to us. It's a joint venture. We get a piece of whatever they find.
There's a fellow that we hire, when he comes here to pick up her stuff, he says, what do you do with it? He says, it all goes on the floor of her warehouse. We put the cardboard there, we put the glass over here, we put the computers over here, and whatever else.
Well, right now, our recycling program, we collect cardboard, and we don't make any money from it. And the same thing with the landfills. So we're still going to deal with the incinerator, you know, have a lot of issues with that. But the good news is, on the solid waste side, we found a lot of different ways where that department can be profitable and can start considering profitability as an option, because right now, you talk to them, and they're like, oh, we just pay someone to take our trash, and we pay, you know, we charge you and me for it. No, there's money in trash, and there's a better way to do it. So we did that. And then WASD, which is Water and Sewer, my favorite department, we've, we've been working on for some time. We've really been working on the infrastructure and meeting the consent decree and ocean outfall with the state. But even though I was the person that brought the five-year plan that raised water rates in order to meet these things, over the years, we've been able to save money. So the administration proposed a 6% increase to our water fees, and I was against that. Currently, we've gotten it down to four. I think that we can do better, and I continue working with WASD. We're going to have something hopefully by the 20th. But these are the fee parts. So everybody's like talking about, like, who's getting cut out, like, of the budget, but the fee parts are important, because, you know, it's, it is a tax, right? It is a tax, and these are unnecessary things. These are things that it just took a little bit of time to fix it, so that you can find something that works better for the county and that respects the money that we pay into this system. Like, you can't just say that you're going to, and this is the fight that I had specifically with solid waste. You know, solid waste director gets up, and she's like, whoa, you know, we have to raise the fees at least as much as CPI every year. Why? Why you gotta raise the fees every year? Who said that? You know, but that's the mindset, and that's what we've been trying to change at the county, is, is this mindset. But now we go into the 20th, and we go into general fund, and we're going to go department by department, what people are spending, you know, even some of the.
Is that a public meeting?
That's a public meeting. It's a meeting of the whole. It's a public meeting, and I hope everyone comes and participates.
They can watch it on.
We can watch it on TV, you know, and, and one of the problems that we have at the county is that people are just not showing up, you know, and, and people complain about it. But these commissioners get away with hell. Look, transit is in full freefall. It's in full freefall. You know, I, I got a lot of heat for, for saying that we should cancel Metro Connect. Here we have an administration who's saying that we have a transit deficit of 250 million, but then they bring an 18 million contract for a free service, and at the same time, they're saying, and by the way, Commissioner, we want you to raise STS and what you charge people with disabilities to ride transportation. So let's get this straight. People with disabilities have to go through a process and pay 350, wait for it, this is, this blows your mind, to pay 350 to ride on that transit, okay? You want to raise that fee $1.75, but over here, you have a free system that's Metro Connect, no application, no disability, able-bodied human beings that have a free driver service, you know, and you think these two things should coexist? And listen, my commissioners got mad at me. Oh, Raquel, but, but our residents love Metro Connect. Well, I would love a free service too. But as a parent of two children with disabilities, I'm paying the 350 for my kids to use STS, right? So, and, and if you're using the bus, or if you're using metro rail, and you're like, well, I'm paying a fee. Like, why do I have to pay a fee, and why are you going to raise my fee 50 cents, but then this person gets to ride free? It's dysfunctional.
Well, thank you for standing up for that, because that does make a difference. So we have two minutes left, and we're going to do this again.
We're going to do this again. We're going to do the second part.
Okay.
Part two, part two, and maybe part three. I mean, haven't even gotten to the healthcare.
Oh, congratulations on whatever happened the other day. There was a change in that, but.
Yes, necessary.
We know there's, yes. And there's very few things in life that are free. There are a lot of good ones that are, right, like waking up in the morning. So Commissioner Raquel Vergelato, thank you so much for being here. We look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. Do your best for all of us here in Miami Dade County.
100%. And listen, there is no one solution. There's no magic bullet, but this is an opportunity to really get this regional government right. A lot of things have been going wrong for a long time, and never, never waste a crisis.
We're going to end this with you looking into a camera and thanking some people that have helped you.
Thanking some people that have helped me. Well, first and foremost, I have the best family like in the world. I. Uh, thank you some people that have helped me. Well, first and foremost, I have the best family like in the world. I won the lottery of birth. Uh, so I have to thank my amazing family for always being supportive of my public service, including my wonderful children. Uh, who put up with me and all my papers uh, and all the time that I spent on it. If you ask my kids, they'll tell you that I just go to a lot of meetings and talk a lot. Uh, that's what I do for a living and it's an amazing opportunity uh, to serve our community. And I'll I'll tell you now, because I'm not going to hide it anymore, I love being uh, the District Seven Commissioner, but I'm all in for mayor in twenty twenty-eight.
Wait, I I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Let's say that one more time.
I'm all in to be the Miami-Dade County Mayor in twenty twenty-eight.
Watch that on Instagram. It's coming up real soon. Commissioner, thank you so much for being here. We'll see you soon. Say hi to your dad. Again, folks, thanks for joining us. Remember, give your family, all of the family, a big hug in the coast. See you later. Bye now.